7 PM, Tuesday, August 5th, 2025. I will call the city council meeting to order. Clerk Hubbard, please call the roles.
Counselperson Huckabee.
Here.
Counselperson Johnson.
Here.
Counselperson Les O'Hare.
Here.
Counselperson Schultz.
Here.
President Jacob.
Here. Thank you. All right, item three, public hearings. Tonight, we have none. Item four, public comment. The city council will receive comments from city residents. Comments are limited to three minutes per individual. Anyone wishing to speak is required to sign up in advance or state the following items for the record when called upon: name, address, and subject matter, and contact. No action will be taken on any public comments unless item is listed elsewhere on the agenda. Note for those following along on Zoom. If you wish to speak, please raise your virtual hand through Zoom, as a chat box is not monitored during the meeting, and those on the call must remain muted if not recognized to speak. We will start out with those who have signed up. Tonight, we have Jim Marius, I believe. Marius, sorry. I do my best at pronouncing.
Get some practice at it. My name is Jim Rusus. I live here in Fort Atkinson. I'm here to speak to the question of whether or not to recite the Pledge of Allegiance prior to each city council meeting. And I want to be clear, I have nothing against reciting the pledge at all. I've said it probably hundreds of times myself. I imagine the two main concepts of the pledge that are important to those in favor of this would be God and flag, which I understand. But I want to draw attention to two other parts of the pledge, with liberty and justice for all. I have a good friend who lives here in Fort, who was born abroad but has lived here in the States for 30 years. He and his wife are active members of our community, have full productive jobs, and pay taxes. He has a green card, but these are uncertain times. To my friend, this is not someone else's problem. He feels that he could be on a list and could be picked up arbitrarily at any time. He and his wife have made the difficult decision to move out of Fort and out of the country. They will be selling their home and leaving in October. To be honest, it makes me sad and it makes me a little bit angry that this is happening. This guy is a cornerstone member of our community. I moved to Fort in 2016 after 40 years as a teacher in public education in four states. I missed working with kids, so I took a job as a teacher's aide at Luther Elementary here in town. I became friends with a young Mexican-American man as we shared lunchroom duty. He was born in Chicago but moved his family to Fort in search of a better life for his kids, something we can all certainly understand. Shortly after President Trump was elected the first time, my friend and his wife and three young kids were verbally and physically harassed at the Fort Holiday Parade. They didn't feel safe. He and his family no longer live in Fort. We have a significant Hispanic population in Fort Atkinson. One estimate put it at 15% to 20% of our population. Because of the policies of the current administration, we recently arranged for an immigration lawyer to speak to the local Hispanic community to educate them on their rights. Notice was sent home with all Hispanic K-12 students. We had only one person show up for the presentation at Luther. Fear is a palpable reality for these people, and there are neighbors. My wife taught English as a second language at M A T C here in Fort for several years. We got to know many of these people in our local Hispanic community. They are kind, family-oriented people, good neighbors, and the kind of people that I think that we need in our country. You were elected to represent them too. Liberty and justice for all. If you do adopt the pledge, you adopt the whole pledge as part of your sworn responsibility to the whole community of Fort Atkinson. And I want to repeat what I said at the beginning. I have nothing absolutely saying against saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I just think, as I said at the fluoride hearing, that this is possibly part of a Republican agenda that really has no place in city government. So thanks for your opportunity to speak my opinions.
Thank you. Next, we have John Kellin.
I want to speak briefly to that portion of amendment number one.
Just state your name and address for the record.
I'm sorry. My name is John Kellin. I live at 522 Robert Street in Fort Atkinson. And I want to speak briefly to that portion of amendment number one that would add a separate comment section to the city council agenda. I'm in favor of that. As you probably have already noticed, it would allow the council to get to its agenda and the city's business after hearing comments pertinent to those, while still allowing for other general comments at the end of the meeting. Now, Jefferson County Board of Supervisors follows this practice, and I think the Fort City Council would do well to do so too. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Adam Thompson.
Hello, city council. My name is Adam Thompson. I live at 365 Ramesh. I've come to speak regarding against the pledge. Kind of done this a couple of times already, but I just want to bring some notes regarding the pledge. So like, it was kind of created to have a dual purpose with fostering national unity with kids and also to boost business for a magazine called The Youth Companion. I did some Googling, by the way. It really just doesn't seem like the right thing for a city council to be doing. And like, before you vote on the pledge in our meetings, it was written, like, also, it was written in 1892 by Francis Bellamy. This guy was a Baptist minister, self-described Christian socialist. He was xenophobic. He believed immigrants should conform to his narrow vision of American identity, and his patriotism was not inclusive. It aimed to shape the country in the way he thought would Americanism look like. Again, it just doesn't seem like the right fit for city council. Additionally, the phrase "under God" was added in 1954 during the Cold War era to appeal more to Christians and contrast with the US, you know, kind of thinking that the Soviet Union was atheist and godless. This is really like a, it's a real propaganda thing that's been used throughout time. I don't think it's the right thing for the city. So I just want to let you all kind of think about those facts, and thanks for listening to me.
Thank you. Last signed up here is Lori Wolgemuth.
Hello. As you all know, I am for the pledge and what I've just.
Lori, please, you need to state your name and address.
Okay. 307 East Milwaukee Avenue, Lori Wolgemuth. The pledge has nothing to do with race and legal and illegal. It's, the reason everyone wants to come here is because, whether they're legal or illegal, they all want to come here mainly because of what the pledge stands for and what our country stands for. And I have many friends that are of different colors than me, and I don't even look at them like that. It's kind of disgusting to me. So for over a year now, we've been trying to make our citizens aware that at our city council meetings here in Fort Atkinson, the Pledge of Allegiance is not being acknowledged. I believe most of us have had enough of going along and to get along. We need to stand up for our city and country and do what is right. Almost every time that I've had the privilege of being here, I've had to take off of work from my job, and at least two times, I had to take vacation time. But that's a small sacrifice that I felt I had to do. I'm sorry, I did not have my speech written out. I didn't have time. My father was in the Korean Army, and he had a lie. He was 18 and was when he enrolled. You had to be 18, and he was only 16. He never graduated from high school so that his older brother could stay back and watch the family and let him graduate. He was a huge VFW member, and he always dressed up in his uniforms, I remember, in the parades, carrying the gun or the flag, and leaving the house countless times for funerals to honor the vets. My brother and I was always told that we had to stand and cover our heart when the flag went by, always. And for the same reason, we should be saying the pledge. It is a tradition, it is a privilege, and it is an honor, and it's respectful. And we need to uphold it in our city and country. Is that my time?
That's your time. Thank you. This will be a first call for anyone on Zoom wishing to speak. Second call for anyone on Zoom.
President Kyle.
John, you're recognized.
John House, 104 Jefferson Street, Fort Atkinson. First of all, I guess I get a little confused here that the Republican name comes up in this argument about the pledge. I'm an independent Christian conservative. I certainly am for the Pledge of Allegiance. I was really impressed with the young lady Girl Scout that came and spoke, and also the high school student. That's our future, teaching those young people how to be happy with our country. So that's all I have to say tonight about that subject. Again, I am for it. Thank you.
Thank you. One final call for anyone on Zoom. Seeing none, public comment will be closed. Moving on to now, item five, consent agenda. The consent agenda is outlined below. It is hereby presented for action by the city council. Items may be removed from the consent agenda on any one request of the council member. Items not removed may be adopted by one action without debate. Removed items may be taken up either immediately after the consent agenda or placed later on the agenda by the discretion of council president. I will just make one note that on the item B, council member Johnson was not present at the fluoride session.
I moved to approve the consent agenda as listed, items 5A through 5C, with that one edit noted second.
We have a motion and a second. Anything else? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item six, petitions, requests, and communications. Tonight, we have none. Item seven, resolutions and ordinances. 7A is review and possible action relating to the substitute amendment number one, an ordinance to amend section 2-53 and section 2-54F of the Fort Atkinson Code of General Ordinances relating to the Order of Business Rules and Bylaws for Council Meetings. Manager Holsman.
Thank you. I think we're all familiar with what's in substitute amendment one. There are five parts. I will say, at the meeting on July 15th, council members did make a motion and a second to divide the question into multiple parts, but a vote was not taken on that. Instead, the vote was to postpone the matter until, to this meeting. So again, the five parts of the proposed amendment are the addition of the Pledge of Allegiance, the addition of a consent agenda, adding a public comment period for matters on the agenda, adding a general comment period, and then setting rules for the comment periods as outlined in section 2-54 sub F. So those are the five pieces. There is a motion on the floor that needs to be disposed of before action can be taken, and that motion is to divide the question. So, Council President Jacob, you are, take it from there. I'm happy to answer any questions from the council on this matter.
As she said, we have a motion and a second, so if there's any discussion on that, otherwise, we will take a vote.
It seems to me, when I was there and we turned it into this, we weren't going to get to a decision unless we cleared it up.
Well, with that being said, then, we have a motion and a second to split the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion to split. So, as from there, we can.
Yeah, I think with the first item, item one would be adding the Pledge of Allegiance. I had a few topics, so, one, I think this has been a great topic.
There needs to be a motion.
My apologies, my apologies.
To the floor.
Say again?
There just needs to be a motion to bring any of those five matters to the floor in a second in order to begin discussion.
Wonderful. All right, thank you.
So I move to add the Pledge of Allegiance.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion now?
Yeah, yes, I do. Okay, so, we've had a lot of great discussion on this topic, where I think, hopefully, we've learned a lot, whether that be Roberts' Rules of Orders, discussing constitutional cases, critical thinking, which includes recognizing cognitive biases and argumentative fallacies, but most of all, allowing differing voices to speak their minds. I applaud especially the youths that came to these meetings. I applaud their bravery speaking to power. And although we may disagree, I can recognize that they have bright futures ahead of themselves. There's been some comments made at previous meetings that if we don't put this on the agenda, we are restricting the First Amendment rights. And this is a false statement. Our city council meetings are not in open public square. They are limited public forums designed for the orderly conduct of business. In this setting, the First Amendment doesn't guarantee the right to speak or express views in any way, at any time, or through any particular ritual during these meetings. This is enshrined in court cases like Perry Education Association v. Perry Local Educators Association, 1983, Roe v. City of Cocoa, 2004, and Steinberg v. Chesterfield County, 2008. This is why we can prohibit, and you've seen existing and previous council presidents, you know, dress the crowd during clapping, shouting, booing, or otherwise disrupting the meeting. We are not violating anyone's free speech rights when we do that or ensuring meetings stay productive and respectful. The same principle applies to the Pledge of Allegiance. Whether we include it or not is a choice about how we conduct our business, not blocking your rights. Your First Amendment rights are protected, and you'll always be allowed to say the pledge on your own time as many times as you want without being punished by the government. Additionally, in the past, we were told that that this is not a ritual. But a ritual is described as "an act or a series of acts regularly repeated in a set precise manner or done in accordance with social customs or protocol." Standing facing the flag and reciting lines in unison fits this definition exactly. So you may hear me use the word ritual through the remainder of my comment. Again, I reiterate that in West Virginia State Board of Education v. Barnett, 1943, it was stated that "no official can prescribe what shall be orthodox in politics, nationalism, religion, or other matters of opinion." Generally, it states no official can mandate speech, which even if it is, you know, nationalistic, patriot, et cetera. So if you wish to say. Generally, my principles are that I disagree with any government putting expected speech on the agenda. And this is a principle I hold dearly, even though many believe the pledge is patriotic. I don't make exceptions to my principles. I will also not alter my principles or religious views to participate in this ritual. I've even discussed this with my pastor, and First Amendment rights protect anyone from being pressured from participating in the pledge by their government. I want to move on to social pressure. Some residents have claimed that there would be no pressure to recite the pledge if you wished not to. But in the same meetings, others have recited words like, "love it, leave it, or get out." It is also stated, "if this flag offends you, I will help you pack." These comments reveal an underlying pressure to conform, exactly the kind of pressured speech the First Amendment protects us from. We've also heard that it is our job to radiate patriotism, but that is not the legal and moral duty of city council. Our job is to govern effectively, represent all residents, including those who may dissent, and uphold constitutional freedoms. We had a resident state that even when she saw a teacher not saying the pledge in school, she was angry and told her to stand and embarrassed her. Now, I think it is reasonable to expect that of over 12,500 residents in the city of Fort Atkinson, please pause, my fellow council members, and, you know, think to yourself, do you think it's even reasonable that there would be more in the city that would hold those same beliefs? I've also heard, if you're against the Pledge of Allegiance, why are you a politician? The answer to that is to support the Constitution. I never said I was against the pledge. I'm against the idea of the government prescribing speech. It signals, we've also heard, it signals to the voters that you are not here for our rights but your own agenda, and that is what I'm going to be thinking. I wish the state's all residents, I am here for your rights, and your rights are held intact if we do not add this to the agenda, because I strongly support individual rights. We've also heard, what are we teaching our residents or youth if we don't say the pledge? We're teaching them about true liberty. Liberty applies to even those whom with we disagree. And there are always diverse views we must consider. We need to be mindful of biases and fallacies while we, and think critically about these topics. Someone had indicated, what will be next? Eliminating the Star Spangled Banner or America the Beautiful? This is a slippery slope argument. This local government body does not have control over private organizations who wish to say or sing those things. And this is not on the agenda. We are not telling residents they cannot say the pledge at all. That's not what we're saying. Additionally, it's been brought up that there's a lot of division in the country and that the pledge does a lot of magical things to include creating unity and fix division throughout the nation. But this is a city government, and our job is not to fix issues throughout the nation. I swore to uphold the Constitution of the United States, not only in my role as city councilman, but also as an officer in the United States Army. And that is what I am doing. We have this obligation as council members. I do support your individual freedom to say the pledge as many times as you want on your own time. I serve all constituents, those who want the pledge added, as well as those who don't. Even as a Christian myself, I take these duties as councilman very seriously, and I realize I do not, I realize that I need to recognize all views, not just those who believe in God as I do. I also support those who do not wish to make the flag a golden calf and idol to perform a ritual to. If we want to use the excuse that many residents support this, as councilman, I sometimes have to pause. Is our job to bend to every will of the people? Because if, and again, this may be a slippery slope argument, but would you support giving every resident $10,000 if each one of them came to a city council meeting and begged for it? I think our job as city council members are to think critically through these situations, and these are based on my principles is where I've come to. I realized on this topic that my principles and beliefs are rooted in the Constitution and individual freedoms. And I've said I disagree with the current administration or have Democrat or Republican views. I'm a nonpartisan representative of the city. I am patriotic. I serve this nation as a member of the United States Army. I'm a lifetime member of the VFW, a member of the American Legion, but I think my membership expired, as well as a few other civic organizations within town. In the Army, I've served with individuals from all backgrounds and religions. Whether someone says the pledge or not doesn't define their love for this country. The First Amendment also means that government cannot punish or prevent you from asking it to fix a problem or change a policy. This is called petitioning for a redress of grievances, and it's a core First Amendment right. So although some of us may disagree, I fully support your rights to let us know what you believe needs to be fixed or addressed. But in turn, I ask that my rights not to participate in a ritual be equally respected. If my refusal to participate in the Pledge of Allegiance offends anyone, I ask them to reflect. Is it truly liberty and justice that you want? Or is it compliance and capitulation from all? I guess, the last thing I'd just say is I can't tell you how much sleep I've lost over this issue, how many people I've talked to to try to come to this conclusion, whether it be religious leaders, veterans, and others. And this is still, I believe, I can still uphold everyone's individual freedoms and still not want the pledge on the city council agenda. Thank you.
Anything else? Go ahead. I'm going to speak, but go ahead first. I, I'm perplexed by this. We had one of our speakers tonight call this a right-wing Republican conspiracy. Are you serious? I sit in a bipartisan, nonpartisan seat. I spend really a lot of time trying to be a councilman so that I don't fall one side or the other with my decisions. So I guess I have to fall back on that I talk to a lot of people. I've asked a couple of hundred people, not just the people who showed up here. Tonight was a little more balanced, but all the other nights, it was unbalanced to say the pledge. Tonight was a little closer rating, I'd say. But in the people I spoke to out in the public, it was a no-brainer. It was almost a 99% said, yeah, we like that idea. So as a councilman, and my job is to represent the citizens of this city. And I think the citizens of this city is more like an 80/20 or 90/10 issue. So I can't find myself doing anything else but representing the people I was elected to represent, making sure their voices are heard. And I'm for the pledge.
My position from the start has been that there's been higher, there are higher priorities for us to focus on. And so I asked at the outset, how does this ordinance change? Help us deliver or improve city services? And then do it at the lowest possible tax rate, which I think we can all agree on. That's what we would like from city government, is to deliver service, the best possible service, at the lowest possible tax rate. So I don't know that I've heard an answer to that yet that convinces me that this was, this is a good change to our ordinance. It feels a little bit like more a personal preference. And it's been my thought since the beginning that it diverts staff's attention from providing basic service to keeping municipal government running. But despite all that, I've looked back since we've started this discussion several meetings ago, and I've just looked at some of the things that we've accomplished in that time. The Ridgeview lots, groundbreaking. We've closed down the sale of two lots in our business park. We've got an agreement to sell six lots on Grove Street. We have a fire and EMS protection contracts with townships that are well on their way towards being ratified. We've got new garbage and recycling contract proposals. We started collective bargaining with our fire and EMS union. We invited the public to tour, and it was a great turnout at the New Public Works and Parks Operations facility. The 2026 budget process is underway. We sought requests for financial auditing services that we'll handle later this evening. We've onboarded new hires. And surely, there's a lot more in that time, just some of the bigger things. And it makes me wonder, like, what more could we have accomplished in that time? What more could we have done to improve, deliver city service at a cost, at the lowest possible tax rate? So I've also kind of gone back. I've taken notes every time somebody has gotten up and spoken on this topic. And by my math, we've had 14 different individuals get up over several meetings to support it. We've had four get up in opposition to it. And we've had one person who I'm, I think, was kind of, I wouldn't, I would hesitate to put him in either bucket because I'm not quite sure where he was. He just had some comments on it. I too have talked to people outside of this chamber because I think that's important. We can't just let 14 or 18 people be all that decides which way we go forward with. And I would say it's, it is, there's an equal amount who say, yeah, not a bad idea to add the pledge, or, no, I'm not for it. And then there's a big swath in the middle that say, you know what? I really don't have an opinion. So I've heard in this, in, those who support it, that reciting the pledge is unifying, that it doesn't take that long, that it shows respect for country, the flag, and those who serve. Yet at the same time, we've heard from several individuals who have served and continue to serve, including one of my colleagues. to serve, including one of my colleagues, with service backgrounds, who don't support this measure. So are we also listening to people who do not support the, the change here? I'll just, a last comment will be this. If this is to pass, I will stand and recite the pledge with those who choose to do so. But perhaps more importantly, I will respect anyone who chooses to opt out.
I agree with David about all the wonderful things that this council itself has brought to bear on the city. But I would question whether or not if they had started those meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance, we would have done any less. I doubt that. We'd have done the same amount of good stuff. It's not like the pledge could stop us from doing good things for the city. So I, part of me dislike going, it's, it's a nice talking point, but it would change little of all the outcome of what the council does.
I think my point is more, what could we have had staff do in place of several meetings? We had an ordinance committee meeting. We've had, this is now the fourth meeting where this has been a discussion. They've had to prepare memos and write amendments and other things. I'm wondering what more could we have done in addition to that list of things that we've have achieved in the last couple of months? What more could we have done had we focused more on, on having staff work on providing basic service and, and at a favorable impact on the tax rate?
And I just-
And how does, how does this do? I mean, I guess maybe I would ask back to you, you know? How does adding the pledge help us in that endeavor?
I can't say that the pledge helps us in that endeavor, but I can say that it doesn't interfere with that endeavor either. So as long as it's not interfering, and I believe it to be the popular choice of the citizens who live here, I think we should pass it.
My concern is that, is people pointing the finger at other people, saying, I want you to say these words. That's what I disagree with. We're the government. I, I get it, like, residents are, they can have that view, and I support them in that view. Okay? That's, that's enshrined in the First Amendment. They can tell us what they want. Our job as city council members is to think critically through this. If you want to start adding expected speech onto an agenda, I think that's a dangerous path to go down. If you want to say the pledge, say the pledge on your own. Nothing, no one's stopping you from doing that.
No offense, Eric, nobody stops you from not saying it all you want every day, as many times a day as you don't want to say it.
And I'm not saying I don't say it, I just disagree with it being on a government agenda.
I respect you. I respect your opinion.
Absolutely. Put the bouncing back and forth with it.
President Jacob, I just have one comment. There was a very thin manual that I was given to become a city councilman. And, but I do understand that it's to listen to what my constituents want to have heard. And I'm in full support of the pledge for, A, honoring the petition that went around that was signed by 154 Fort Atkinson residents, by a lot of people that have come to me and have spoken to me. I wasn't out soliciting a survey, but, you know, they came to me. And the other thing is, is I think we can't go wrong by being role models and examples for the next generations coming up. So that's all I wanted to add to the discussion.
Okay. I, I think I would just add to that, I think if we're referring to the, the petition that was circulated at the ordinance committee meeting initially-
I think it was brought last year, initially.
And then if it's the same one that was part of the ordinance committee meeting, like, I, as I recall, there were a number of people that are outside of the city that, that signed that. And I don't know who circulated it. Not that, I don't know if that's a requirement or not. Some of the pages did have who circulated. I don't know, I don't, I don't know where they were collected. There were certain things that looked like they had been, like, like a Post-it note or something was put over it. So I'm not, I'm not quite sure, like, we don't have the originals, but we have photocopies of something, and I'm not sure what circulated exactly.
All right. Well, with that being said, we have the motion, the second on the floor, to add the Pledge of Allegiance. I will ask for a roll call vote on this.
Councilperson Huckabee?
Aye.
Councilperson Johnson?
Aye.
Councilperson Lesko here?
Nay.
Councilperson Schultz?
Nay.
President Jacob?
Aye. Motion carries.
I, I move to add a consent agenda, subsection four.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any debate on this? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
I move to add a public comment period for matters on the agenda, subsection six.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any thoughts or debates on this? Seeing, seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion also carries.
I move to add a general public, public comment period, subsection 13.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any debate?
Council, President Jacob, the only comments that I received was, it was perceived a bit as pushing people off, as unimportant. But this is one that I've kind of struggled with too, because, but I also understand the need for us to be efficient in our meeting. But I just wanted to share that comment.
Any other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion also carries.
I move to set rules for the comment periods as outlined in section 2-54F.
Second.
Motion and a second on that one as well? Any discussion?
This one, I, I have a lot more discussion for. So this one, I did go out and speak with different people about this. And the thing that started me on that was that, as Councilman Schultz has outlined in his earlier talk, is that we're here to uphold the Constitution. And the First Amendment is, Congress shall make no law respecting the establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof, or abridging the freedom of speech or the press or the right of the people peaceably to assemble and to petition the government for a redress of grievances. So I think some of what's been added to the rules, I agree with. You know, the issues regarding or with city staff, there is a protocol for that. If there's a problem, they would go to the manager. If there's a problem with the city manager, they would then go to whichever council members they'd want to. But it wouldn't necessarily be a public forum sort of thing. So that one I don't have any problem with. The first one, where it's political topics of any nature, that to me feels very, very subjective, and I think could get misused all over the place. You know, as we've seen in just our debate about the Pledge of Allegiance, it's being deemed as political, and has been deemed as political in the past by this council. And I beg to differ, because if, I could see where it would be political if we were the city council of Moscow, and we're petitioning to say the American Pledge of Allegiance at the Moscow City Council. But we are Americans in America, on an American city. So I would have trouble with leaving that political topics of any nature in there.
Just, just a quick point, that is not a, a change that's, that's being proposed. Those are currently in the ordinance for the public comment period, and all this ordinance change does is make the same topics that are already prohibited, make them for both the public comment period for matters on the agenda and the general public comment period. So just wanted to make that point.
Further concerns?
Well, I would just ask a question if you, Councilperson Huckabee would yield to a question. I'd like to understand a little bit more that the council has deemed something political. Are we talking specifically a particular topic? What would that be?
It was, I believe, when the Pledge of Allegiance was being said at the council meeting during a public comment, and the council president at that point had said he stopped it because he deemed it as political.
I think probably referring to me.
I am.
So I, I know what I said at that time, and that it fell under the, any subject not relevant to the interest of the city of Fort Atkinson.
Okay.
So, and, and in, and in the bigger context, as I recall, it's not an open mic period. There are things that typically, that, that would not be appropriate for an open mic time. Somebody could come in here and read their favorite lyric from their favorite recording artist. Is that in the city's best, in, is it relevant to the city's interests? No. Somebody could come in and read an ad for their business. Is this the appropriate form for that? No. So I think it, it was not a, it was not deemed as a political topic of any nature. It was, is it relevant to the interest of the city of Fort Atkinson?
Okay. I appreciate the clarity.
And I just felt that, that my time was to all citizens who had anything to talk about. I mean, we've heard beautiful poetry told to us. We've heard people complain about the deer eating their flowers. I don't see how that, it doesn't need the arm bars on it that we might be trying to put on it.
We have heard poetry written here before, here are right. And it was in context of a tourism effort to bring Loreen Niedecker fans to, to our city at, at that time. So we certainly have a tourism interest in the city of Fort Atkinson.
I love that part. I mean, that, there was nothing wrong in my mind with that. But this almost reads like we could say no to that.
If there were, if it was deemed by the, by the chair of the meeting that there, that it was not relevant to the city of Fort Atkinson, then you abide by the chair's ruling? You could appeal it?
Anything else?
I just want to confirm who seconded the motion that is current topic.
Councilmember Huckabee.
Thank you. I want to confirm, appreciate that.
With that being said, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. We will move on to item B. Second and possible third final reading of an ordinance to amend section 34-2 of the C of Fort Atkinson Code of General Ordinances relating to fire inspections and reporting. Fire Chief Peterson.
Good evening. As we discussed at the last meeting, the fire department does 700 occupancy inspections each year. Besides fire code violations, we also see that fire systems have the annual inspections required, such as fire alarms and sprinklers. Formerly, there's no formal requirement to submit documentations of these inspections, or that fire code violations have been repaired. This proposed ordinance grants the fire chief authority to require electronic submission of inspection records, along with evidence of fire code violation repairs. There's no direct costs to the city or the fire department associated with this. In fact, the, we project some sort of a labor savings by not having to revisit businesses to see compliance. Also, businesses are already required to have these inspections done. This is just simply a way to establish a formal process for submitting those results. So staff recommends the city council perform a second reading of this ordinance, suspend the rules to perform the third reading, and take action to approve the ordinance amending section 34-2 of the municipal code relating to fire inspection records and reporting.
I guess we just ask you, chief, or staff, if there's been any input from the public on-
I have not, I have not received any.
Nor I.
I move to suspend the rules and offer a third final reading of this ordinance.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. This is a roll call vote.
Councilperson Huckabee?
Aye.
Councilperson Lesko here?
Aye.
Councilperson Johnson?
Aye.
Councilperson Schultz?
Aye.
President Jacob?
Aye. Motion carries.
I move to approve the ordinance amending section 34-2 of the municipal code relating to fire inspection records and reporting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further questions on this? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item C, second and possible third final reading of the ordinance to create section 18-82 of the City of Fort Atkinson Code of General Ordinances relating to certificates of occupancy for changes in use. Director Drager.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, so this was, this proposed ordinance was heard by the ordinance committee on June 25th, and also by the city council did the first reading on July 15th. I have not heard any responses or feedback from, from this particular ordinance. Currently, we do not require a certificate of occupancy for a change of use unless there is a building permit that has been pulled that coincides with that change. This is proposed, this proposed change would require a certificate of occupancy for any change of use or occupants be type. So if it was a office use and is going to remain an office use, there would be no need for a certificate of occupancy. This would be for a change of use, so an office and then a restaurant is moving in here. Now, given that example, of course, they'd be getting a permit for that, because there are certain varieties, but there are other instances where this comes up. And the goal behind this new ordinance would be to get in contact and create a point of contact for a new business or a moving business, to help them walk through that process and direct them into, to the other departments where they may need approvals and review. It is meant to head off any potential repercussions for a business, potentially added costs because they moved into a space and now they are already occupying that space, and then finding out that there are safety requirements that they were not followed or they were unaware of. The intent here is to give them that point of contact so that they have direction prior to that, moving into a new space. Financial impact of this is not expected to result in a significant financial impact, but is a hope that there is an overall cost efficiency and code enforcement by heading these situations off and being in contact with them ahead of time. City staff does recommend the city council perform a second reading of this ordinance, suspend the rules, perform the third reading, and take action to approve the ordinance amending section 18-82 of the municipal code relating to certificates of occupancy. And I would welcome any questions.
I'm only curious on if it, this unit is occupied by occupation one, and he moves out, and this guy moves in, and he wants to do occupation two. This is just as completely legal as occupation one. Is he at any risk of not being approved?
It would depends on what one and two are. So it's not an approval process from the city saying that they can move into the space. It's merely trying to direct them that they're not missing, potentially missing, having fire extinguishers and those items that are not in there, or needing, since it's a new change of use, the state of Wisconsin requires them to have exit signs and different exiting requirements, because they have the potential for, instead of 10 people in this building for an office use, they have potential for 40 people in the space. And if there were a fire emergency, those 40 people can't get out through the one entrance that they have. So it's, it's meant for the safety and for, for that business to be informed that they have some requirements that they may need to meet prior to moving into the space.
I will just add, I think Councilwoman Johnson, what you might be referring to are zoning matters. So if, if both occupancy one and occupancy two are both permitted by right under, under the zoning code for that zoning district, there would be, there's no way to stop them, right? So it would not be the city saying, no, you can't be in this space. It's simply the building, this is kind of the building side of it. How can you be, you're permitted use in this zoning district. How can we make sure that your space is safe for the occupancy that you're proposing?
I like that. I like your answer.
That's correct. Yes, thank you.
So basically, this is just for going, say, one of these corner fronts was a retail outlet, and now we're changing to a small kitchenette establishment. That's the biggest example.
That would be a, an example of where they would need a certificate of occupancy. And then what the example would be, they would call the Department of Neighborhood and Building Services, it would be my office, and I would help them through filling out the application and directing that application to the other departments within the city. that application to the other departments within the city to get feedback and see what all they may need to do with their and likely and some situations, it'd be very, very fast and and very few things that they would need to do.
So by no means we are trying to hinder any establishments.
Correct, yeah.
And here we're just trying to streamline to make everybody get in as fast as they can and get functioning and hopefully making profits.
Correct, yeah. An example that I gave to the ordinance committee was we had a situation with somebody moving into a space downtown. They had no ill intent, of course, but they didn't go through the certificate occupancy and then they were doing things after the fact and having to withhold their opening of the store rather than being prepared for that situation. We're trying to avoid that.
It's always more expensive to retrofit something than is to to do it, do it right the first time. So that's what we're trying to, we're trying to accomplish with this ordinance.
Correct.
I move to suspend the rules and offer a third and final reading of this ordinance.
Second.
Motion and a second. This is a roll call vote.
Councilperson Huckabee.
Aye.
Councilperson Johnson.
Aye.
Councilperson Les Goher.
Aye.
Councilperson Schultz.
Aye.
President Jacob.
Aye. Motion carries.
I move to approve the ordinance amending section eighteen point dash eighty two of the municipal code relating to certificates of occupancy.
Second.
Motion a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Item D, second and possible third final reading of an ordinance to create section one dash one six and amend various other sections of the City of Fort Atkinson Code of General Ordinances relating to fees for procedures, re inspections and permits. Director Drager again.
Yes, thank you. Because those various other portions of this are references back to the original one. So when you go to these other sections and you're looking at potential conflicts or if you're having a violation in that code section, it references you back to this main section. That's what all the rest of those are for. This main section here is is addressing a situation where we have a limited ability to recover costs from city staff and departments and code enforcement for a small number, a small percentage of residents or properties in the city. I should say properties mostly, this is a mostly orientated towards property owner. However, what we're running into or what the city runs into here is disproportionately, we're focusing overwhelming amount of city staff's time towards those small number of instances. This is meant to create a fee based process where after a notice is sent out, which is typically thirty days, depending on the the safety hazard of the of the code enforcement action. But typically thirty days after that thirty days passes and a reinspection is done, if that code enforcement action has not been taken or excuse me, the the remediation of that issue has then not taken care of, then there would be a reinspection fee assessed. Citations is how we've generally gone forward with moving people along and it is viewed as an aggressive and it is very hard to recover those costs through citation. And once again, it increases the amount of staff time and resources that are spent trying to collect those. Police force, police department spends a lot of time code enforcement, court clerk, city attorney, and then eventually the municipal judge spending time on each one of those citations if there's not a resolution figure before it gets there. This this is an attempt to get those fees towards the person or property that is having an issue. At the same time, those reinspection fees on a fourth reinspection fee, there is an opportunity for that the that property owner to meet with the Department of Neighborhood and Building Services, myself or someone in my department to arrange for how we can remedy that situation. However, the citations will also remain in place, so there is that possibility of due process as well to remain so that that person chooses, they can go through that process and and they can still see the city attorney or get it in front of a judge and make determination there. And I'd be welcome any questions on this. I do want to point out that as from two thousand eighteen, we have outstanding from citations for just five different citation code enforcement citations. We're near almost fourteen thousand dollars that are left uncollected because of citations and the difficulty and and how to collect them. So this is a way to make sure that fee is borne by the person receiving the code enforcement rather than the general public that is funding the bill at right at this time. Like I said, the city staff does recommend that the city council perform the second reading of this ordinance, suspend the rules and perform the third reading and take action to approve the ordinance creating section one dash sixteen and amending various other sections of the municipal code relating to fees for procedures, re inspections and permits. And I welcome any questions that you have.
Have you had any public input saying we don't want this?
I've had none.
I assume with this, we've reached out and kind of gathered this from other communities that may have. They said whether this is kind of the deal breaker that's helped them a lot or not or.
Yes, it's one whitewater particulars who I reached out on on this quite a bit. They went through this process recently and as a matter of last couple of years. This has been very helpful and a very good tool. And I kind of looked at their their ordinance and then tailored to where I felt that the the city of Fort Atkinson was at.
We've seen a lot of positive results out of that.
Yeah, yes.
I move to suspend the rules and offer a third and final reading of this ordinance.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. This is a roll call vote.
Councilperson Huckabee.
Aye.
Councilperson Johnson.
Aye.
Councilperson Les Goher.
Aye.
Councilperson Schultz.
Aye.
President Jacob.
Aye. Motion carries.
Move to approve the ordinance to create section one dash sixteen and amend various other sections of the City of Fort Atkinson Code of General Ordinances relating to fees for procedures, re inspections and permits.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further questions or debate? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item eight A, our reports of officers, boards and committees. Eight A is city manager's report.
I will first just note that I think Councilmember Les Goher took my notes earlier at this meeting, so you might hear a lot of the same things that he mentioned during this city manager's report. On July twenty third, we did celebrate the groundbreaking for the Ridgeview Lofts project on the northwest side of the city along Banker Road. This three story eighty seven unit apartment building continues to progress and we look forward to seeing the start of the townhome project within the next couple of weeks. We had a successful community open house at the new Public Works and Parks Operations Facility on July twenty fifth. Eighty two people attended and were provided tours by Tom Williamson, Nick Reath and Ben Dayton. I want to thank all of the community members and elected officials who attended and celebrated with us and thank you to all the staff members who made that possible. On July thirty first, I attended the League of Wisconsin Municipalities Chief Executive Seminar in Green Bay. We heard an economist speak about the economic state of Wisconsin, including population shifts and the continued employment gap. I also attended sessions relating to multiple housing projects in Reedsburg and negotiating contracts. So it was well worth my my day in Green Bay there. The city closed on one of those Grove Street lots last week. We intend to close on the other five mid month this month with the goal of six new housing starts in that subdivision this fall. The Fort Atkinson Area Community Survey, which is part of the Retail Market Study Project, is open and ready to be taken by members of the community. The survey is an opportunity for residents, employees and other stakeholders to share their thoughts on what types of businesses and services they would like to see in Fort Atkinson. The results will be part of a larger report and strategy for the city to focus our economic development efforts. So you can find more information and the link to that survey on the city's website. We celebrated a couple of promotions this week in the Public Works Operations Division. Congratulations to Nick Ridenius, who was promoted to crew leader and to Brandon Tybert and Austin Armstrong, who were promoted to equipment operators. I appreciate their service and I'm always so pleased to announce when we promote from within. Retaining, training and promoting talent from within is extremely important to the future of this organization. The Fort Atkinson Police and Fire Departments recently hosted tours of their facilities with members of the Hoard Museum. The members were very impressed with the departments and enjoyed the behind the scenes peek at each of the stations. The museum is very grateful to Chief Bump and Chief Peterson for their generosity in hosting those tours. The Dwight Foster Public Library's Summer Reading Program ended on July thirty first. More than eleven hundred individuals participated in the readings, in the library's reading challenges this summer. Highlights from the program included an evening with author Nicholas Butler and poet Nick Gulig, a princess party, donate donut decorating with Papa Brunk and interactions with many community members excited about reading, learning and exploring their local library. The preliminary equalized values from the Department of Revenue have been released. The city is looking at a nine percent increase in equalized value, which means that we will be out of compliance with the D O R's assessment ratio requirements. Clerk Gobert and I are looking at addressing this through an updated contract with our city assessor. So that will come back to council and over the next few weeks. The D O R also released the city's net new construction number for two thousand twenty five. This will drive the allowable increase to the levy for the two thousand twenty six budget. The good news is that it's higher than it's ever been since I started here four and a half years ago. The bad news is that it is only point six seven percent still. So not 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 killing that net new construction yet, but we will soon. The city's water main replacement and road work, road work continues to progress. Eric Street was completed. Paving on Kramer Street started today. Kerbin gutter is expected to be poured on McMillan and Fourth at the week of August eleventh and the water main installation began on Memorial Drive last week. And finally, August twelfth is City Hall selfie day. Every August, engaging local government leaders network brings together thousands of people nationwide to celebrate public service by taking selfies in front of city halls and other local government buildings. Everyone is invited to join in across the community. This year, with the help of the Hoard Historical Museum, city employees will be presenting some historically inspired side by side photos. Check out our social media pages on August twelfth to see photos and learn more about how to participate. So everyone here can snap a selfie on their way out in front of the municipal building and get it over to us and we'll we'll put all those on social media. So it's just a nice fun thing that we can do to bring awareness to to public service. So that is all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Item nine, unfinished business. Tonight we have none. Item ten, new business. Ten A is a stinky one. Review and possible action relating to proposals for solid waste and recycling collection services for the city of Fort Atkinson. Manager Hossman.
Thank you. As as we all know, we have an agreement for solid waste and recyclable collection with G F L. In December of last year, the city council approved a negotiated amendment to that agreement that terminated the agreement as of December thirty first, two thousand twenty five. So earlier this year, staff requested authorization from the council to release a request for proposals for this service starting in two thousand twenty six. We did, we developed that R F P and released it to four known companies who provide this service. We sent it to John's Disposal Waste Management, G F L and Pelletary Waste Systems. We did receive two responses from John's Disposal and Waste Management. The base bid for this in that R F P was for fully automated curbside weekly collection, garbage collection and disposal and fully automated curbside every other week, single stream recycling collection. And bulk items would be provided for residents on a per call basis, curbside at a predetermined price billed directly to the residents. So note that that was the base bid and that was that does represent a service reduction to the current service, which is every week garbage, every other week recycling and bulk, one bulk item included in the contract costs, but you do have to to call the the waste carrier. So this this memo outlines all of the the bids that we received, including the that bulk base bid per item. Both proposals, John's and Waste Management, had a twenty five dollar fee for that. They both provided fees for monthly charges that would go directly to the resident for any additional carts. Those are included in the summary of bids on table one, along with the per unit pricing. So the first year for the base bid, John's per unit price was sixteen seventy and Waste Management's was sixteen sixty. And for alternate bids, there were two alternate bids in the R F P. The first one was weekly garbage collection and weekly recycling collection with no bulk. And the second alternate bid two, it represents our current service level, which is weekly garbage recycling, every other week recycling collection and one bulky item per month. So that is outlined in the summary of bits. As as is, there's multiple tables in this memo. I hope if everybody from the public got a chance to take a look at it, a lot of a lot of work went into into the analysis of these proposals. There was the R F P requested a five year agreement and also requested the proposed cost increase throughout the agreement. So table two in the in the memo outlines that year one base bid and then year two, year three, year four, year five. So the first year that Waste Management proposal is slightly less on a per unit per year cost, less than a dollar difference. But by year five, it's about four dollars more per unit per year. The Waste Management increase is between four and six percent annually, depending on C P I, whereas the John's Disposal annual increase is three and a half percent over the five years of the of the agreement. So again, all the alternates, Waste Management only provided the bid for the base bid, but all of the two alternates and then a third alternate. The two alternates are provided in tables three and four in the memo. And then the third alternate, which John's Disposal provided was weekly garbage, weekly recycling and bulk. So the cost of the cost of all of these is summarized in table six in the memo. So that'll give you an idea of the first year, how much we're talking for each of these services. So the first year per unit cost for the base bid for John's disposal was two hundred dollars and forty cents, whereas Waste Management was a hundred ninety nine dollars and twenty cents. The alternate one, John's disposal, two twenty four forty. Alternate two, year one, two thirty one and alternate three, year one, two fifty five per unit per year. We did reach out to references for both Waste Management and John's. John's were overwhelmingly positive. Reviews for Waste Management's was was mixed with some municipalities indicating that there was a large workload for municipal staff in handling customer complaints. That is one of been that has been city staff's experience with our current G F L contract. And and so we would obviously, we we would prefer not to deal with those types of of complaints. So we did also during this process, look at, you know, do do an analysis of the potential cost of of providing this service with city staff. However, due to the significant capital costs related to starting the service, such as purchase of the garbage and recycling collection trucks, as well as the additional staff that would be needed for this, we are recommending that the city not enter into the service area that is currently adequately covered by the the private sector. So after everything that we took a look at internally with the two proposals, staff is recommending that the city council authorize the city manager to execute a five year contract with John's Disposal Services at the current at the city's current level of service, which is alternate two, at a cost per unit of two hundred and thirty one dollars for year one with a three point five percent annual increase. And as mentioned, you know, staff has mentioned this throughout this process on December seventeenth, then again on June third, that the the city and taxpayers have benefited from the relatively low cost of the contract with G F L for many years due to their contracts limitation on annual increases to one half of of C P I. So that also limited G F I G F L's ability to retain quality staff and purchase new equipment. So we did know at the time of proposals that service would likely be more expensive than our current contract with G F L. I will also note that G F L did not provide a proposal to serve Fort Atkinson. So I did take a look at surrounding communities and given that we know that our net new construction is so low and we could not absorb the entire cost of this contract on on the city's tax levy, we did look at other options, right? So one option is moving the moving this away from the levy and putting it on property taxes as a special charge. That is not on the agenda tonight. That may be on the agenda in the future, depending on what happens with this contract tonight. But I did just want to mention that again. I did some research on surrounding townships and cities and villages in Jefferson County to determine if that is on the tax bill for them or on the tax levy or on a monthly as a monthly utility bill. So it is, there is a table on, I guess, page ninety seven of your packet that shows the surrounding towns, what they pay per customer, per unit, I should. that shows, uh, the town, sur- surrounding towns, uh, what they pay, uh, per customer, uh, per unit, I should say, and and some what of the, some, what of some of the other cities and villages, uh, also do. Um, so, the, uh, I'm happy to answer any questions about this. Again, the, um, staff does recommend that the city council authorize, uh, the city manager to execute a five-year contract with John's disposal at the city's current level of service, which again is alternate two, every of the, every week garbage collection, every other week recycling collection, and, um, bulk, uh, one bulk item per month. You do have to call, uh, for, at an estimated total cost of nine hundred and fourteen thousand, five hundred and twenty-nine dollars, or two hundred and thirty-one dollars per customer for year one, which with, uh, three-point-five percent annual increases. I know that was a lot. I'm happy to answer any questions, uh, that council may have on this matter.
Do you, do you have any, your knowledge why Waste Management, management did not supply any of the alternate?
Uh, I I do not.
Um, aside from that, um, C P I, um, I know it kind of fluctuates year over year and over time, but like generally speaking, is it typically around two to three percent?
Over the last couple of years, I mean, it went all the way up to nine one year, right? But that was not typical. Um, it was the the C P I that we use, uh, for some of our other contracts. It was, it's typically between one and and four percent, with the exception of those years with high inflation.
And the only other questions I have is regarding the bulk pickup, and I want to make sure that I understand, because I have a few people who have, um, who are interested in the bulk pick-up, and I don't want to lead them astray. Um, under the John's proposal, um, the, it, would it still be scheduled, or would people get their, this is the day of the month to put your bulk pickup out? It wasn't clear to me at reading through the proposal.
It would be scheduled.
So it would be scheduled, um, and then, um, I I don't know that I saw any kind of like size, like restrictions, other than it it seems like they may pick up something a little bit bigger than what our, uh, current policies. I'm thinking like, uh, like, uh, um, like a sofa.
Yeah, that that is, um, that is included in their proposal. I think it's on page five of their proposal, and that is page two hundred and sixteen of the packet. Um, that all those items are are included. Bulk items include furniture, appliances, white, white goods, including freon, bedding, carpeting, other large items, waste oil, automotive antifreeze, lead ba- lead acid batteries, and tires are also included. So tires have never been anything that's been included in bulk pickup.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it does seem like there is some more, more, um, wide-ranging.
And that's not an unlimited number of tires, by the way. I just want to say that, limited to eight small vehicle tires, uh, per home, per year.
Okay, thanks.
Household electronics are also included with that bulk collection.
Did I possibly misunderstand you? You were looking for a motion to allow you to go ahead and do this?
Uh, that's the recommended, um, that's, that's the recommendation, uh, in the staff report for, um, to choose to accept the proposal from John's for the alternate bid two, which maintains the service level. And then I would negotiate a contract based on the R F P and the proposal with John's.
Is this that something we handle tonight?
That piece would be yes.
I make, I I still move to, uh, to allow Rebecca to enter into a contract with John's disposal for what she has arranged and, uh, her hard work has produced for us.
I assume that would be.
Just to be clear, that's alternate two.
Is that correct? Al- alternate two as ident- as outlined in here is what you are proposing?
That's the extension of the city's current service level.
Yes.
Second. A motion and a second. Any further discussion? I will just say, thank you very much. Um, a couple of meetings with you the last couple of weeks, seeing how frenzied you were at first with the contracts. A very, very good job on your part to lay this all out as well of you, as well of you, as you have.
Thank you.
So with that being said, uh, we have the motion, a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And you oppose? Motion carries. Item ten B, review and possible action relating to proposals for financial auditing services for the fiscal years ending in two thousand and twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-seven, Clerk Ebert.
Thank you. If council recalls the June seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five meeting, uh, we were authorized to submit, uh, R F Ps for qualified auditing firms for, uh, upcoming three-year contract. R F Ps are utilized to, uh, maintain physical responsibility, um, compliance with changing fi- fiscal standards, and also policies. We did provide the, uh, R F P to five firms, and it was posted, um, different websites, including the League of Wisconsin Municipalities and the Wisconsin City County Manager Site. Uh, we did receive four proposals. Uh, fortunately, one did not, uh, meet the requirements that we had set forth in the R F P, so we did take time to review it. Um, it was a, a tough decision, but as stated, you know, we had some requirements that we set forth with the R F B, so we did, uh, disqualify that one from the final determination. Uh, they were reviewed, um, based on methodology, um, experience with similar-sized, uh, clients, uh, borrowing, T I D, open enclosures, uh, capital projects, um, other things that we, uh, typically deal with, including utility rate studies. Uh, we have worked with Baker Tilly for the last twenty years, which is who staff is, are recommending. Uh, we've been very, um, aware of the of the partnership that we have with them. It's, uh, worked very well. Um, you know, there's increasing cost of, uh, services that we do see with them. Uh, we have a longstanding partnership. Um, we're very, uh, pleased with it. A couple perks that we have is, um, Baker Tilly, uh, can comply with, um, I'm looking for the word interface with our financial software. Uh, so it is a very seamless item when we are providing, uh, reports and data to them. Um, they, we call it a, a data dump. So it's a a ten-minute procedure where they pull the information that they need, which saves me about eight hours of gathering, uh, materials. So, um, that right there is very efficient. Um, they understand our accounts, and having our long history is they remember items, um, prior to, uh, myself come here eleven years ago. So, uh, it is a great, uh, history we have. We have good communication with them. We are looking to approve the contract for years ending two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-seven. Uh, in the packet, we did break up, uh, the rates between, um, the three, the total four, but as I mentioned, uh, Baum and Associates was the one that we did not, uh, kind of consider in the end. Our rates are very comparable between all of them. I did a survey with some other, uh, professors, finance officers across the state, and it comes to find out we are very much in line with our population, our number of funds, our T I Ds, our activity, our borrowing. So we feel very comfortable with the numbers that they did provide us. Uh, happy to answer, uh, any questions of the council. Uh, one final note, I do want to say that the the full amount of the quote includes, you know, the entire audit. So there are sections that are specific to, uh, the utilities. Um, and then sometimes we do have special audits for T I Ds, and in those situations, the portion of the utility audit, uh, is split between the respected utilities, uh, which is broken up between stormwater, wastewater, and water. Um, there is a, um, Form C, uh, that's, uh, related to the water utility, um, so that is separately charged to the water utility. And then also, should we have a a rate study, it would be charged to utility. Additionally, any, um, annual audits or single audits we have to do for T I D would be charged to T I D. So if we were to break it out, we would look, um, based on past years, we'd be between thirty to forty thousand dollars. That would be a general fund of the quoted over fifty thousand dollars, so. Uh, I I hope if you have any, any questions about that, please let me know, and these are all numbers that I just work with regularly, so these come natural to me.
And not a question, but I do appreciate you, uh, reaching out to other communities with, uh, makeups of ours that that kind of get a night, gauge whether, uh,
Exactly.
in the ballpark and gives me confidence that we are.
Well, and I think there's something to be said too for the continuity, because you have to kind of reinvent the wheel and real, retrain and so I appreciate that.
Agree. Um, and our auditors, um, they point out our last few years, we've had a very aggressive street improvement program, which is a lot of work, um, on the backend when it comes to depreciation of our assets. And again, I don't want to muddy the water for any conversation, uh, but it is, uh, very in tuned, and I've learned a lot from working with them over the years. I'm not afraid to dig in and ask, but then they're also available to show me what I'm looking forward to, make sure that we can, uh, move forward and be successful.
It's very nice looking at these, that they're all basically within seven hundred and fifty dollars of each other. So we're not, I mean, other than the one outlier that you put in there.
Yeah.
Uh, it's very nice to see that it's not a way all over the board trying to guess on these proposals, so. Anything else from anyone? Was it look for a motion?
I move to approve the proposal from Baker Tilly for financial auditing services for the City of Fort Atkinson for the fiscal years ending in two thousand and twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-seven, and authorize the city manager to execute the contract.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And you oppose? Motion carries. Moving on to ten C, review and possible action relating to updated invoices from Aquilis for two thousand and twenty-four sanitary and stormwater inspection services, Director Navin.
Good evening. So on October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, staff brought forward a recommendation to council to approve a contract for sanitary and stormwater utility inspection services. The city council approved this contract for seventy-one thousand, seven hundred and fifteen dollars, as shown in the attached memo. This work was completed in late two thousand and twenty-four and early two thousand and twenty-five. Through this work, the vendor came across several sanitary and storm sewers that needed additional cleaning, which the city approved for heavy cleaning as the work needed to be done to plan appropriately for the two thousand and twenty-five rail construction project, and the crews were already on site for this. The attached photos show the heavy cleaning required to complete the pipe inspections. Uh, a better understanding of these heavy cleaning requirements in the areas of the city will help city staff improve budget estimates in the future and identify where staff resources should be focused through the annual sanitary and storm sewer cleaning program. Um, the goal in the future would not to be having storm sewers that look the way that they do in the attached photos, right? So that we are just tackling some normal sanitary cleaning inspections and moving forward with them. So the attached invoice includes an additional thirty-six thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars for heavy cleaning of the pipes identified in the two thousand and twenty-four work. These costs will be assigned to the respective wastewater at eight thousand, nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars and fifty cents, and stormwater at twenty-seven thousand, five hundred and two dollars and fifty cents for those utility funds. The recommendation is for staff, sorry, staff recommends the city council approve the charges for two thousand and twenty-four heavy cleaning and inspection of sanitary and storm sewers totaling thirty-six thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars to be paid out of the respective wastewater and stormwater utility funds. Uh, any questions that might arise?
The the photos that you had attached in there, um, I take it that those are actual, uh, from ours, like the ones that, the, the, uh, not the ones of the, the, the pipes, but the other ones that show, um, like solid dirt debris and what else filled in there? Um, i- i- is that a result of stormwater management gone wrong, or?
Yeah, just needing, you know, needing to keep up on on stormwater management throughout the, throughout the city and focusing on some of these areas that we know we're going to be working in and putting in extra efforts that we are, uh, getting ahead of them.
But I take it that one or two images, like they are really the outlier, like there's not very many like that.
We're not gonna see a lot of that in the city. There's just, uh, and those are gonna be in low-line areas where a lot of that is gonna collect.
Where were these from again? I didn't quite catch in the memo where. Um. The second attachment.
Yeah, it was from, it was from the roadwork, uh.
It would have been the twenty twenty-four and twenty, they're sorry, twenty twenty-five.
Roadwork.
So we're going on right now.
Okay, so over by the hospital.
So McMillan, McMorial, McMorial, McMillan.
Don't worry.
Memorial. Um, Eric Street, uh, and Fourth Street, I think, are, and Kramer.
Okay, correct.
And I'm just curious, how often do we have to do this?
The.
The stormwater, or?
So we do the inspections ahead of any street projects that we're gonna do, so that we can repeat, make any repairs needed when we're in there. The general cleaning is something that gets done in different parts of the city on an annual basis.
Okay, thank you.
We do our Public Works Operations Division does, part of their job is to, is to clean some of these out. But as you can imagine, there's a lot more, uh, inlets and, um, storm sewer pipe than than we have, um, then we have time to clean. So sometimes, uh, things get, things get missed, and sometimes we need the extra, um, heavy cleaning with equipment that we don't necessarily have, and this was one of those cases.
Further questions for the director? Entertain a motion.
I move to approve the updated invoices from Aquilis from Ford, two thousand and twenty-four sanitary and stormwater inspection services.
Second.
Motion a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And you oppose? Motion carries. Moving on to eleven is miscellaneous. Tonight we have none. Item twelve, claims appropriations and con- contract payments. Twelve A is review and possible action relating to the verified claims presented by the Director of Finance and authorized payment.
I move to approve the verified claims as presented.
Second.
Motion a second. Uh, any further discussions? Seeing none, uh, this is a roll call vote.
Councilperson Huckabee?
Aye.
Councilperson Johnson?
Aye.
Councilperson Les Goher?
Aye.
Councilperson Schultz?
Aye.
President Jacob?
Aye. Motion carries. Item thirteen, adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And you oppose? We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.